Questions of the candidates, so we'll be hosting that here on July twenty second. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any anybody else that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into our first business item seven A. Consider approval of ordinance number two, five, dash, three, four, six, one in ordinance authorizing the sale, consumption, and possession of alcoholic liquor at specified locations on the public right of way, and approving the closure of certain streets for the Abilene Oktoberfest. City Clerk Moore.
Mayor Commissioners, this is the ordinance that is required to for the organizer of the event to send into the state to get their temporary alcohol license. It is just approving the shutdown of the city streets and the public right of way. All of the property owners did turn in their or were signatures were turned in, so everything is good to go with this.
Do we have any questions for staff on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two, five, dash, three, four, six, one.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, we do roll call vote. Commissioner Colehoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next business item is seven B. Consider approval of resolution number zero, seven, one, four, two, five, dash, one, a resolution authorizing and directing, directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-five, of the city of Abilene, Kansas, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax if necessary, for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said notes as they become due, making certain covenants, covenants and agreements thereto, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith. Interim City Manager Quinde.
Thank you, Mayor Ryan and Commissioners. I sent out earlier that bid tabulation that we received six bids and the best bid shows a true interest rate of three point four two percent. And we have Clayton Kelly with Piper Sandler remotely, who will go over the bids that we received and the documents in front of you for consideration today. You should have in front of you the updated documents that reflect the best bid earlier when the packet went out, though some of those items were missing, but that percentage rate was and what the company was. Clayton.
Thanks, John. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yep, loud and clear.
All right, awesome. John, I think you stole my thunder there. So yeah, I mean, it's a great result for the city just in terms of interest rate. So appreciate that and really just in terms of number of bids received, it's one of the larger ones that more bids that we've seen in a while, just on a temporary note financing, which is a great result for the city. Usually more bids equals equals a more competitive result. And so that's what we saw today was the city receives six bids on their temporary note financing this morning. And another indication of, you know, was this a good result or was it? Was it not? Not only with the number of bids, but also where they came in at. When you look at the difference between the the best bid, which was from Loop Capital Markets at a three point three four percent. The second best bid was point zero two percent higher than that at a three point three six percent. And all six bids actually came in within about point four four percent of each other. So again, just just a really good indication of the results today and how does that, what does that mean in terms of dollars to the city when we were really originally running these preliminary debt service schedules, we were we were hopeful to be kind of at the beginning of this process. Under a four percent rate would have been great. We were running our numbers with kind of more in the four and a half percent rates, just to be cautious and that equates to when we go from a four and a half to five percent rate, all the way down to a three point three four percent rate. It results in about seven hundred thousand dollar dollars less in interest cost on a ten million dollar financing. And so just to kind of give you an idea of of some perspective of what that means to the city in terms of actual dollars. So just a reminder that these are funding the industrial park, KDOT, and then the rec improvement projects through a temporary note financing that will be one sometime in the future in the next, at least in the next three years, permanently financed. So just kind of the first step in this process, securing this interest rate, accepting the bid from Loop Capital Markets, all of that is essentially done within the resolution being considered on this action item. So with approval of this action item, it allows us to lock in these rates and kind of do everything we need to do from a legal perspective to allow the city to close on the temporary note financing on August seventh. And one more note on that is when we do close on August seventh, it will be at a the bank of the city's choice, where all funds will be deposited. They'll be start earning interest earnings until those funds are used, not only on project fund dollars, but also on capitalized interest funds. So the entire amount of funds deposited on August seventh until they're used for construction will be earning interest earnings on on those. So overall, just really good result for the city and appreciate you guys giving me the time to to review the sale results this morning.
Questions for Clayton? I've got one. So Clayton, in your experience on these, this is the first time I've messed with temporary financing bonds. In your experience, obviously, when we when we get to the permanent financing, the amount will be lowered due to those grant dollars that we were able to capture. But do you typically see that the permanent bond interest rates are are lower than these temporary notes?
Um, so that'll that'll really depend on the market at the time that we go to permanently finance. So the the nice thing about the temporary note financing is it does give you the flexibility to reduce the the final project size that you will go in permanently bond finance. So you have flexibility on on the reduction, but the interest rate that you'll receive through a bond financing is it's going to be subject to whatever the interest rates are at that time. Um, and and so we just don't know at this point, but again, we try to be somewhat cautious in in what we're assuming for that. And I believe we had shared schedules a couple of meetings ago with what that looks like, whether depending on the term of finance that you go to permanently finance. But really, I would say in this at in this current market, in that ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five year financing term range, you're looking anywhere from probably four to four and a half percent interest rates for a permanent bond financing.
What sort of a term are we planning on for those longer term notes?
I I don't believe that that's been discussed. It's been discussed, but I don't believe a decision has been made yet on the the term to move forward with. And it doesn't, it doesn't have to be until we get closer to any type of permanent bond financing.
Yeah, I think that would really be a just a policy level decision by the commission based on at at that point, how much how many dollars are actually still needing refinanced to permanent financing, kind of. I think and we had some examples in there that were ten, fifteen, and twenty year bonds. But if we can knock this down with the grant funding, along with the lot sales at the industrial park, we may be able to you know, get lower to that ten year mark. If further questions for Clayton?
Commission doesn't have any more questions for Clayton. I think this goes along with what Commissioner Colehoff asked that when those, when the city has to do permanent general obligation bonds, you have grant money that will offset some of those costs. So for example, the industrial park, the city received a two point five million dollar grant for commerce. So it looks like you'd be financing about a million dollars as opposed to the full amount. It's just some rough numbers in your packet and what the commission's asked to do is to approve the resolutions that authorize and direct the issuance, sale, and delivery of the general obligation notes, series twenty twenty-five, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any necessary paperwork with that.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve resolution zero, seven, one, four, two, five, dash, one, a resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation notes, series twenty twenty-five of the city of Abilene, Kansas, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax if necessary, and for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said notes as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements thereto, and authorizing other documents and actions collected therewith.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate that we have, I think, really been acting irresponsibly. I think this interim city manager Quinde has really brought that to light here. We have no way to pay for the bonds at the industrial park. And with the C clip project, we're bonding out one point nine million dollars to dig up drainage tubes that we don't know are broken and replace sidewalks that don't belong to us. And to me, that's irresponsible, and I can in good faith vote for that. So I've spoken my piece and I'll vote accordingly.
Do we have any additional commission discussion? Seeing none, we do.
I just want to mention one other thing.
Sorry, Clay, go ahead.
There will need to be a an action item for the resolution, but then also an action item for accepting the the bid from Luke Capital Market. So I want to make sure that it's understood that there's those are two different motions.
Um, we're in the middle of a motion right now, but I think it'd be appropriate to amend the agenda to add that business item if the commission thinks it's appropriate. It's is there a timeline for that, Clayton?
Um, no. So it's just on this on the same excerpt of minutes with that signature pages. Like, well, that's just one one act item for the approval of other sitting right now, which is the resolution. So we just need another motion after this resolution is considered for the acceptance of the bid from Luke Capital.
What Clayton, I think, was trying to say was there's the excerpt of minutes, the resolution, the transcript, the proceedings, and the federal tax certificates. And I'm not sure if the city attorney or Clayton have an opinion, but I don't not sure that amending the motion to include accepting the bid would be acceptable, or if they have to be too separate. I've seen him, seen it happen both ways.
City Attorney Martin.
Yes, I would be deferential to Clayton. However, I think proceeding is this action as it's been presented with the motion and seconded. And then, secondly, coming back and accepting that bid. And I know there was a reference to amending the agenda. If there's a need to do that, we certainly can. However, I think implicit in this first item is is an award to a particular institution, and I think we just need to designate that in the following item. And I think it's encapsulated in what is described on the agenda for this item. It's just breaking it down into two separate action items. There would not be a formal.
I agree with that.
Written resolution.
Would you prefer an amended motion or a separate item after this?
No, I I think the motion as before you is acceptable and actionable. And once that if 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 that passes, then the next item can be a simple motion to accept the bid from that institution.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I will. We do have a motion to second. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we do roll call vote. Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Colehoff.
May.
Myself, yes, motion carries.
And so for this next motion, motion to um, accept the bid from from Loop Capital Markets LLC with a true interest cost of three point three four two zero zero three percent.
Second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
A quick question here, I guess, for city manager Quinde or finance director Brian. What will the process be for placing those funds and looking at some type of interest rate on those? Are we going to put that out to bid for any financial institution in the state, any local institution?
We have to designate a bank that they will transfer those to, which is Astro Bank. And then, once that is deposited, we'll go with the investment policy that the city commission has adopted and place those in the best position to invest that with timing that allows us to withdraw it as those projects have need drawdowns.
What will the the timing be on that? So you said it'll be already placed, it's planned to be placed with an existing, within an existing account that's already been designated?
We create several accounts. We place that in one bank account, but internally for tracking purposes, we create four different accounts that that is attributed to. But yes, one bank initially, and then we'll spread it out and invest it according with the city's adopted investment policy.
Would it be appropriate to put that out for bid?
I can just look at the investment policy. I can look at it and get back and let the commission know what that policy says.
Okay, thank you.
I presume it would be the same process as sending those RFPs to local banks.
I think what we've got kind of a note, we know what those projects look like. And we know what our needs, or at least roughly what our needs will be. I would like to see that put out to bid for any local financial institution.
Yes.
Or non local.
When we'll need it, yes, to get the best interest we can.
Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we will move to roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Colehoff.
May.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven C. Consider approval of resolution number zero, seven, one, four, two, five, dash, two, a resolution of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate for purposes of the city of Abilene, Kansas, twenty twenty-six budget, and directing the city manager to notify the county clerk of such intent. The manager one day.
Before the commission considers that, I have a short presentation that I'd like to present about the city's financial outlook and some strategic considerations. Okay, but while it's lagging, I'll just start that. In the short time I've been here, I've noticed that the department directors adhere to the axiom that you see there on your screen, that presentation, that the choices made today paper will be headed tomorrow, and each decision is connected. What we do now doesn't just affect today, but it sets the course for everything that comes next. So they, you definitely have a dedicated staff that's genuinely concerned about the benefit or the progress of the city of Abilene, and they reflect the community values very well. So a quick summary, the general obligation debt that the currently currently hold is about seven point two million dollars, which is thirty-four percent of the statutory limit. By statute, for general obligation bonds, the city can only have thirty percent of its valuation in debt. Valuation is at seventy million dollars, so you're limited to about twenty-one million dollars in debt in general obligation bonds. The assessed valuation, as I mentioned, it rose from sixty-seven million to seventy million. The general fund reserves, though, have been declining. In twenty twenty-three, they're at one point eight nine million. Like I left twenty-four out, but that was about one point three million. And it's projected to be down to five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars at the end of this year. There is a trend of a deficit of drawing down our cash reserves, where the tax revenue lags expenditures, which has accelerated the reserve depletion. The city has a fund balance policy that says that city will adopt an annual budget that will provide for an undesignedated fund balance reserve in each of the city's budgeted funds, and specifically says for the general fund, no less than fifteen percent or no more than twenty-five percent of the anticipated current year revenues. The twenty twenty-five budget has anticipated revenues in the general fund of five point five million dollars. With that number, you should have at least eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in cash carryover, which you will not meet at this current time, or a maximum of one point three nine million dollars. Here is, on the next slide, is a graph that just shows the trends of the mill levy, and I know it's kind of hard to see there. The top line is the overall mill levy. The next line will be just the general fund. Then we have debt service, the library, the airport, fire equipment, and then capital improvements. The dotted lines are the average over the last fifteen years from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-five. So from that time, you've been as low as forty mills and as high as fifty-one point five mills. There was a question posed by one of the commissioners when the last time that the mill levy was raised. And I inadvertently told you that it was twenty nineteen. I stand corrected. It's twenty twenty-three. In twenty twenty-three, the mill levy went from forty-nine point eight five zero to fifty point one six zero. Then each year after that, it's dropped twenty-four, it went to forty-seven point three five seven, and then twenty-five, down to forty-five point six four eight. So from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, the mill levy rose two point nine mills. And from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, it dropped one point six five two. And then twenty-three to twenty-five, it's dropped another four point five, which is a net difference of the mills dropping three point nine nine two mills. Commissioner Colehoff asked if I could attach numbers to those mill levies that I sent to the commission. I did not have time to do all the years, and I printed out five years for you, but left it back with the city building. In twenty twenty-five, the mill levy brought in, or is estimated to bring in, three point zero six nine million dollars. In twenty-four, three million, seventy thousand, several hundred dollar difference. In twenty-three, we brought in three million, seventy-six thousand, twenty-two, three million, seventy-six thousand. And then in twenty-one, two point nine five seven million dollars. It's been relatively flat as far as the the revenue for the city. This mill levies fluctuate based on valuation, but you can see that's been fairly flat. The next slide just shows that it's a little busy. I apologize for that, but it shows that over the last several years, expenditures have definitely been outpacing revenues. And the dotted lines, the red dotted line shows your expenses growing, and the green dotted line shows your revenues. And then the curved line is the ending cash. And that's a polynomial linear line because you have up and down on your ending cash. So it just shows the trend you're on, which if you extrapolate that purple line there, you'll go into the negative in twenty twenty-six. Go ahead. The next slide. What we're seeing is not just limited to what I've seen, but also another outside view looking in is our recent credit rating summary from Standard and Poor, which the commission requires every time the city considers taking on debt. They did give the city a short term S E one plus rating, which is the highest rating for short term, which shows in the low interest rate that you receive, much lower than anticipated. However, the long term, when you go to do general obligation bonds at the current moment, they affirmed your double A minus, which the city should be proud of. That's a very good credit rating, but the outlook is negative. And they the report says that reflects their concerns about sustainability. Uh, there's a structural imbalance, expenditures consistently exceeding revenues, and it suggests long term budgetary pressures. And the reserve drawdowns limit your flexibility and reduces the city's capacity to weather downturns or unexpected cost. But looking at the, what do we recommend to the governing body as far as a mill levy, and then eventually a twenty twenty-six budget? We look at the comprehensive plan that the city recently completed. And that's a long process you're aware that gets the governing bodies input, the community members input, and looks at a ton of things. So taking that metrics for healthy Abilene from that comprehensive plan is park access, trail mileage, increasing the amount of trails, stormwater resilience, population and housing, school enrollment, downtown revitalization, walkability, and collaboration across the other taxing entities such as the Dickinson County and USD four thirty-five. So how do we fix the structural imbalance that's been noted by S and P and the review that I did? One, to abide by the commission's own policy, we need to rebuild the reserves to a minimum of fifteen percent by twenty twenty-six. Reassess the revenue neutral rate policy. And the reason I say that is revenue neutral, all of the tax lids, as everybody's aware, but it's if it was viable for entity to do, whether it be a city, a county, a school district, the state should have done the same thing for themselves, but they exempted themselves. The state has twenty mills that they levy for schools, one and a half mills that they levy for state buildings and school buildings. And over the same time that that revenue neutral rate has been in place, they've realized seven and eight percent gains in revenue. But they said cities, you can't spend one dollar more when cost are rising. So revenue neutral is not a, you have to do it. It's just a method. It's truth and taxation is what they call it. Where you let the public know, and I think it's a great thing, that every taxing entity says, if I'm spending one dollar more, you have to give them notice and says, we're spending one more dollar more, or we plan to. This is the limit. We may not get there, but we want you to know why. It just gives taxpayers an extra notice that, hey, if you don't like what they're doing, come in and say something and let the governing body know. Uh, another solution is for the city to adopt five year Another solution is for the city to adopt five year fiscal plans. And that will require financial forecasting, looking out into the future. And also adopting ten year capital plans. We do have a capital plan. But you could take that out ten years and then as you do that, realize how much you plan on spending each year. And figure out how to pay for it. Right? That's not being done. It's just here are the things we think we need. Filling key leadership roles like the city manager and the finance director, seeking grants, they've really dried up since the new administration. Regardless of your political affiliation, their grants have not as easy to get. And then conduct an organizational assessment. People say, what do you mean by an organizational assessment? To get fiscally stable and. It's not just about increasing the amount of dollars that we have. We also have to look inside and make sure that we are being as efficient as we can. And by doing that, you do an organizational assessment that will audit the staffing levels across departments. Do we have enough people in departments? Do we have too many? Optimize layers and job roles, implement and expand cross training for operational flexibility. Utilize seasonal staffing where we can and benchmark against peer cities for staffing efficiency. Every city is completely different on how it operates. But in general terms, you can benchmark yourself against a city of the same size and same economic structure. Also implementing quarterly performance dashboards, not only for the governing body and staff to use, but put out on the website. The city does an amazing job of reaching out and community engagement, but putting out one of those dashboards showing how we're doing, how we're performing. Develop citywide, put in a reserve plan, automate systems to improve efficiencies. And eliminate redundant platforms such as software. There, we're not alone. The next one, please. I just looked at some cities. They're not pure cities, they're much larger, but. For example, Overland Park integrated a five year financial forecast in their budgeting process. Lawrence, Kansas has cross functional admin staffing. I didn't say a smaller city like that I'm familiar with that did the same thing. Greeley, Colorado, they realign services via attrition. And then the National League of Cities and the ICMA recommend multi year planning and dashboards. A dashboard for the public to see how we're performing financially, it would be great, even with just graphics that this is how much we budgeted and. They can see that we're doing a good job and if they see we're off, they can call us out on it and say, hey, you're spending too much. Rising cost in municipal government is not the same as a normal household. Most people are familiar with the consumer price index and that tracks changes in prices for things such as food and rent. And utilities. Local governments spend their money differently. So instead of using a consumer price index as a metric, we ought to look at a weighted inflation factor. On what drives municipal cost. There's three major categories, personnel, which includes salaries, pensions and health benefits. There's a tool out there that measures that. It's called the employment cost index and it shows that those costs grew four point three percent this year. And they're projected to rise three point eight six and three point, three point eight percent in twenty twenty six. And that's provided by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Capital projects, building and maintaining roads and water systems, that's tracked by the construction cost index. Right now, it's risen five percent in twenty five and expected to increase six to seven percent in twenty twenty six. And then operating services, utilities, fuel, supplies. That's best represented by the government consumption expenditures price index. That increase or is on track to increase three point four percent in twenty twenty five and three point two in twenty twenty six. What does that mean? Well, when you look at the rate of inflation or the consumer price index, it's tracking at two point eight percent. Our costs are much higher than that. So to adjust for real costs, what we're doing in the twenty twenty six budget preparation, and I'd recommend that. The city continued doing beyond, instead of relying on the consumer price index. You need to use a weighted average and just for illustration purposes, you assume that seventy percent of your costs are personnel. Twenty percent are capital projects and ten percent are operational cost. Then Abilene's weighted inflation for twenty twenty five is right now at four point three five percent. And projected to be four point one eight percent in twenty twenty six. And the point of that is showing that we're not keeping up with the cost. But that's why, one of the reasons that we're spending more than we bring in. So a lot of people want to know if you're going to increase the revenue neutral rate or you're going to do anything to my taxes. What's that going to do for us? Well, the tax bill that the public receives, if you live in the city of Abilene, it's not just taxes levied by the city. It also includes taxes levied by Dickinson County, USD four thirty five, the recreation commission. Through the school district, the state building fund and then the city. And if you look at this graphic here. Dickinson County is about thirty four percent of what your tax bill is, school district thirty three percent. The city's twenty nine percent and the rec is two percent. I didn't add in the smaller ones because I get way down there. But when you look at the city being twenty nine percent of somebody's total tax bill. What of that twenty nine percent of the total tax bill, where is that used? Well, of the city's levy, sixty eight percent goes to the general fund. That covers things like administration, community development. The police department, municipal court, the fire department, parks system, the pool, public works, streets. Capital improvements and some equipment purchases. Eighteen percent of everything that the city levies goes to the library. So that it's called what is called a related entity. You levy on its behalf, but you transfer that money to them and then it's theirs to do. And then nine percent goes to bond and interest and four percent to fire equipment. So to keep up with the rising cost that we have not been for the last several years. The staff recommends that the commission pass a resolution of intent to exceed the state set revenue neutral rate. And setting a maximum levy of forty seven point five five six mills, about a one point nine mill increase from twenty twenty five. But without addressing the revenue and addressing efficiencies and making the best of what we have. It will result in, if we stay at revenue neutral, we'd have to start laying people off this year and into twenty twenty six. If we stay at the twenty twenty five levy, you're going to have to make some changes on services we provide in staffing levels. Which will require a policy decision from the governing body on what services do we trim, cut or what departments do we. Are cutting people out of. The forty seven point five five six mills is not a cure. This is going to require the city to get back fiscally stable. Read for five years. What that force forty seven point five five six mills represents is the four point one eight percent increase of the city's cost projected in. Twenty twenty six. So it foregoes the four point whatever percent this year and the percentages of prior two years. We're just starting from today. Let's get a solution and move it forward. So that's where we came up at the forty seven point five five six. Once the commission makes a decision today on what the maximum levy that they'll allow. Then the department directors and I will go back and start backfilling everything in the budget. Present you a budget that is at or below the forty seven point five five six. Keeping in mind that forty seven sounds a lot, but only thirty nine of those mills go to the city. Eight of those will go to the library. So it's less that we have to work with. So. In my home county, when the city or county or school district makes a change in their tax policy, how does that affect me? So I've got a couple scenarios. Okay. The Census Bureau does a five year average and determines that the median value of a home in Abilene is a hundred and thirty nine thousand. There are other places you can look where it's as high as two hundred and thirty nine based on what sold in June. I use that one because it's an average. But if you have a home that has a market value of a hundred and thirty nine thousand. It's residential, so the assessed value is eleven and a half percent of that or fifteen thousand nine eighty five. At the current property tax of forty five point six four eight, your tax bill for the city would be seven hundred and twenty nine dollars and sixty eight cents. If the commission takes staff's recommendation and puts a limitation on the mill at forty seven point five five six. The tax bill would go to seven hundred and sixty dollars and eighteen cents. That's thirty dollars and fifty cents a year or two dollars and fifty four cents a month. On the next slide, there, we have several examples because not everybody has a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollar house. You had a fifty thousand dollar home. The annual difference would be ten dollars and ninety seven cents a year or ninety one cents a month. If you owned a two hundred thousand dollar home, that's going to be forty three dollars and eighty eight cents a year or three dollars and sixty six cents a month. Commercial property by statute is assessed at twenty five percent. So that's a seventy five thousand dollar commercial building would cost you thirty six dollars and two cents or three dollars a month. Hundred and seventy four thousand dollar commercial building, the difference is eighty three dollars or six dollars and ninety two cents a month. And then a three hundred and thirteen thousand commercial building would be about a hundred and fifty dollars a year or twelve dollars and fifty cents a month. Those are just some scenarios and if anybody's interested from the commission or the public. Kelsey and I have an Excel spreadsheet where we can plug in the value of your home and it automatically calculate what that difference is so you know. And I encourage anybody to call, stop in and we can talk about how that would impact individual people. And the last one, and I did not pick the president because of where I'm working, but it's because of his quote that he made. Back in nineteen fifty four when he was talking about countries falling in the Pacific. As you have broader considerations that might follow what you call the falling domino principle. You have a rogue domino setup, you knock over the first one and what will happen to the last one is that it will go over very quickly. Just like President Eisenhower's metaphor, the city's financial choices are all connected. One decision sets off the next. If we delay action today, the first domino falls. And I would posit that the dominos have already started falling. Revenues don't cover costs. And that leads to the next reserve shrink, which they're already doing. The next thing would be services are cut, maintenance is deferred and personnel are laid off. Eventually we'll reach a point. Where the governing body and the citizens are not choosing between good and better, but between bad and worse. So just to close, every decision that's made today is going to shape the city for years. And I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for interim city manager Quinn Day?
If there are no questions, staff recommended the resolution within your packet that council adopts the resolution setting. The revenue neutral rate not to exceed forty seven point five five six mills and sets the hearing date for September eighth of this year, I believe, four P M.
I do have a question for you sir. So the financial outlook is the. The grants that we're going to get back included in that outlook or is this just minus the K dot grants? For the industrial park and support.
General obligation temporary notes that the city commission approved today has cost in there called capitalized interest. So you needed nine million and I don't remember the number for the projects. But you included capitalized interest, which brings it up to almost eleven million dollars. And what that does is that pays your payments until twenty twenty nine. By twenty twenty eight, you'll have to go out for general obligation bonds. So in the short term, for the next two years, no. The payments on that debt service already covered, so they're not factored in. But in twenty twenty nine, they will be minus the grants that you get and potentially more grants that the city will get in the interim. But you will have some debt service to add in twenty twenty nine, but you'll also have some falling off.
I think it's important for the citizens to know that the financial outlook does not include. The offsets from the grants and things that we're gonna hopefully receive. So I think that's important to highlight that.
Yeah, the two and a half million dollar grant that the city received from the Department of Commerce is huge. That's a great grant and also. The eight hundred thousand dollars for the C clip projects. I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but years ago, the state started taking portions of state highways out of their program. And then they came to cities and said, hey, this section runs through your town. We're taking it off the state highway plan. We're going to give you a one time payment and now you're responsible for it. They still maintain control of what you can do to it, but they don't give you the money that they used to give you every year to maintain that road. But that's on the taxpayers. And same thing with the county. There's a lot of services that the state used to take care of. They've passed on now to the county that without funding them.
You mentioned efficiencies and we've spoken briefly outside of this room about that. What sort of efficiencies do you think you could find within our operations that would help our budget get closer to, let's say, our current revenue neutral rate?
But in the short time I've been here, I think that, and I'm not saying that it's not happening now, but we. Below fruit, start looking at cross training. So instead of having a person that is specialized in just doing this and we're not doing that. They could be doing other things. Cross training and succession planning will help improve efficiencies. So if you have somebody that takes off or. Is absent for a while, we don't have to bring somebody in to cover for him. Somebody can just pick up the slack. For example, the under the finance director is still the municipal court clerk. And the office manager for the police department and doing the finance work all at once. So she's doing double duty for now. But I think you need to look at, you know, without singling out of apartment, what is the workload compared to what they have? Are we duplicating our efforts as far as software? There's, there's so many that I can, I can bring you a better list of some of those. But without doing a true organizational assessment, I couldn't give you a definitive list on, here's some ways that you can save. But even the most lean of organizations, and I know that years ago that Solana went to lean sigma six, something like that. There's always room to improve and cut cost. And just like we run our households or businesses to cut costs. We have to do that as a, as an organization as well.
I guess my preference and I've shared this with my fellow commissioners, uh, leading up to this, is that we. Fix our own problems before we start asking our citizens to cover up our mistakes. I think we're incredibly fortunate that. This bond came in at three point three four percent and where we may actually be able to make money on holding that. Uh, in the short term, but that's certainly not guaranteed. We've added, just with this, the interest expense is about three hundred thousand dollars a year for the next four years. And then who knows how much for just the interest going forward. And so before I ask my fellow citizens to pick up the tab for the commission's lack of oversight. I would like the, I guess my preference is that the city cleans its own house first.
One comment I'll make and I've, I've made this historically as well. This specific resolution just sets that intent to exceed. So last year, we actually. Sent out this notice with an even, we just picked an even number really at about a fifty point zero 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 mill levy. And then through the budget process, we actually brought it down to below revenue neutral at fifty five or forty five point six four eight. So I do want to be clear that this is not setting the budget. It is just setting that maximum level.
Correct. And my last city, we did the same thing and even the league of Kansas municipalities recommended it. Even if you want to stay at the revenue neutral rate, whatever that is, that you adopt a. Resolution to exceed it because the valuations and the numbers we're working with today are estimates provided by the county clerk. Those numbers are not certified until November, which is well after the budget process. And by setting it at the, the recommended forty seven five five six, that's not like the mayor said, what it's going to be. We still have to bring a budget back to the commission that you have to adopt. Which you can change. You just can't go over that amount.
The rest of the mission for your thoughts?
We'll have to have the commission, if they choose, adopt the resolution to exceed it. But we can make the notification to the county clerk by the deadline, which it moves as July twenty.
With that, I'll, I'll make a motion, provide my comments during discussion to approve resolution number zero seven one four two five dash two. A resolution of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate for the purposes of the city of Abilene, Kansas twenty twenty six budget. And directing the city manager to notify the county clerk of such intent, setting that not to exceed rate of forty seven point five five six. And having this hearing then on September eighth.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion?
So making this motion, acknowledging that the. So making this motion, um acknowledging that the fact that um this, again echoing the comments of interim manager Quin Day and uh Mayor Ryan, that this sets an amount not to exceed. So my goal, as I stated in the last meeting, is to be um close to our current mill levy. That's where I would like to be at. But also acknowledging the financial position of the city, also acknowledging um excited to see um what interim city manager Quin Day is able gonna gonna help us with in that organizational assessment. Again, providing kind of an external view at our city operations. Um, and and the position of being an interim, uh not not afraid to tell us exactly how it is. Um, and wanting to set things up in such a way so that the city's in a stable financial position for the next commission. And and for these projects, it is a rate that's lower um than the rate that um I inherited getting into the commission. We saw there in uh those previous years that there was a good chunk of years where mill levy was increasing and valuations were increasing, which is something that I saw and and noted, and hence where that that started dropping down, which as I see it, um uh the uh decision that I've I've been a part of over the past few years was overcorrection. Um, tied with potentially also needing to look at some more efficiencies at the staffing level. So wanting to see both, would like to see our eventual budget come in close to the mill, current mill levy, but wanting to set this anchor um out there in front. So, but that's just my my thoughts.
I could note uh that on the one slide there that the average from twenty twelve to twenty twenty five of the mill levy was forty seven point six nine seven. So that's still below the average. Our goal is to get as low as possible.
Think um all those points are well taken. I think something that is a glaring um oversight in this in this mill levy is the amount of uh covid and ARPA funds that were spent between twenty twenty and and frankly even into twenty twenty five. So the mill levy is not the full picture. Uh, I'll tell you, my goal is to cut real dollars, not just the mill levy. Um, because I do think that there's a lot more efficiencies uh that we can find within our city. Um, I'm I am excited to see as Mr. Wit is uh what Mr. Quin Day can do and um, and like I said, my goal is to to cut real taxes. The city as a as a body is in a really privileged position that we can spend whatever we want and then tell the the taxpayer to pay for it, and that's not the way anybody else gets to run their household. And so again, I'm expecting us to to do our job and and keep the keep the budget where it needs to be. Uh, my understanding is that the county is actually cutting not just the mill levy, but actual real dollars significantly this year, and I don't see any reason why the city, if we are willing to work at it, can't do the same thing. So I'll be voting against this.
Well, one thing, uh again, because uh if this ends up passing and those notices go out, we're I'm almost certainly going to receive those emails saying that um I'm raising taxes. Necessarily what's shown here, it's not there there's efficiencies and that can be squeezed out, but um realistically, if taxes are cut, services are going to go away. So if there's a critique of um or a desire to cut taxes, I I want to hear what services people are accept accepting to get reduced or go away. That that's just the frank reality of it. So it it's it's one thing to hear the hearing cutting taxes. It's the other thing to acknowledge what the consequences of that are and being eyes wide open, looking at that. So that's what would be helpful for me. If, and again, I'm know I'm going to feel those critiques, but to hear uh what what people would be accepting of. If they want to speak from the podium, what which department should have less dollars? So that's that's really what it comes down to. That's the hard decisions that that the governing body has to take. And so um a critique paired with a potential solution is is much more helpful.
And I actually knew this was going to be on tonight, so I actually talked to people and like if I see you out, I just kind of ask people, what are your thoughts? Because I want to know. And everyone I talked to said they were in favor of the increase instead of cutting services or laying people off. Every single person, and that was wide range from seventy seven down to thirty five. So because I always want to hear what people think and what they say.
I think I think my my thought on the the revenue neutral rate is it's not set. So um even though it's a minimal increase on the taxes, I'm okay with setting it with the with the goal of trying to get it as close to the forty five percent. And I'm really proud of the work that the commission's done to keep those taxes either at or below, and that should be recognized. So um I think about those that are on fixed income. Ten dollars for myself and my family a month wouldn't make that much of a difference. But somebody that's on social security, limited limited funds, that could be a lot. So um I'm definitely taking taking that into consideration. Um, if you guys have any feedback, like like um Commissioner Witt said, um let me know. I want to know what what you guys think of it and often the comments that I receive actually help to make an informed decision. So I encourage that.
Um, my thought on it, while recognizing what we've done in the past of of passing this intent to exceed and and setting a um a maximum mill levy number and then bringing it back down um uh at or below that revenue neutral rate um point. Um, I will not be voting in favor of it, not because of of that piece of it, but just my preference to set that maximum mill levy at the forty five point six four eight. So.
Have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to roll call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff?
May.
Fisher Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, no. Motion carries. Our next item under items for discussion is eight A, second quarter treasurer's report. Interim finance director, Breon.
Mayor and commissioners, I have included the second quarter treasurer's report in your packet. I also included an investment report. Um, historically, it looked like you hadn't seen those, so I put that in there as a reference for you guys. Um, and then this will be published um for the report in the newspaper as well. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer those.
Any questions for interim finance director, Breon? We have any additional reports? There's nothing under nine, but I'll make sure. Next item is consider a motion to recess. So moved.
Good with starting right away in our study session? All right, I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to roll call vote. Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Aye.
Fisher Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We're in recess. I will now call to order the July fourteenth, twenty twenty five city commission study session. Threw me off. It says June in the packet, so. Um, our first item is two A, request for southeast fourth street paving. Emily Miller with the Eisenhower Foundation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council members. Uh, my name's Emily Miller, and I'm the director of development for the Eisenhower Foundation. And I'm here on behalf of the Eisenhower Foundation, as well as my executive director, Meredith Slichter, who some of you had the opportunity to talk to in the last few weeks. And many of you have heard that the Eisenhower Foundation is embarking on a really exciting project. We um have plans to build a fourteen million dollar educational facility um just to the north of the Heritage Center, just to the south of the BNSF railway railway adjacent to the Eisenhower Presidential Library campus. Um, those are uh Campbell Street and Southeast Fourth Street. Um, we're at the seventy percent mark of our fundraising goal, and um we're uh trying to meet a very aggressive timeline because um we actually received a two point, or I'm sorry, five million dollar grant. We've received two point five million so far from the state of Kansas, but we will get another two point five once we spend that two point five. Um, but a total of five million um to from the state of Kansas for this project. And um in order to capitalize on that entire uh grant, we have to break ground here at the end of this year, so quarter four in twenty twenty five. So it's a very aggressive timeline. I'm attending today's uh meeting um to talk to you about um your consideration for helping the Eisenhower Foundation find funding to pave Southeast Fourth Street. I'm not asking you or the city, the city, to pay for paving the street. Um, the Eisenhower Foundation, we appreciate the situation that the city finds itself in, and um we are just asking for your consideration to help us find state po- potentially federal grant funds um that we will be uh working with you to solicit, um writing those proposals, preparing those reports, all of those things. Um, this is a really exciting time for the Eisenhower Foundation. We're in the midst of a transformational growth. Um, this particular capital campaign comes on the heels of a twelve point two five million dollar campaign that we finished in twenty nineteen to renovate the Eisenhower Presidential Museum. Um, this also is capitalizing on our hugely popular ICA education program, which um serves all students throughout the entire country, even internationally. But um this particular program has raised student participation onsite from eight hundred students a year to over twenty five thousand um through our three platforms, about eight thousand to ten thousand come onsite here in Abilene. Um, but we also serve them online and we go out into school. So this particular building is going to be a huge asset for the city. And um in addition to paving the road that's just north of our brand new fourteen million dollar facility, um, we all have driven on that road many times, um going around trains. Uh, this would just be a huge asset to the city um in general and to those of us that are always trying to find our way around BNSF railroad. We like it, but we like to get around it too. So um with that, um we we respectfully request your consideration again for us uh to work together to help find this funding um to bring this um really great project to fruition here in the city. So with that, um thank you so much for allowing me to come speak, and I can take any questions you might have.
Any questions for Emily?
I think uh you may be aware, I believe that street is just about fifty fifty city and county. If I'm not mistaken, I don't know if you had reached out to the county.
Um, we have uh we've not reached out to the county at this point, but we will. Um, yeah, and depending on how far we pave, I mean in a perfect world, we'd pave it all the way past Burton Weta, but um that's not realistic. And so, you know, just paving it to where it tees essentially with Burton Weta, that would be really ideal, but um, does the county own that portion too, or is it the?
I think it's about fifty fifty. I so the Eisenhower Foundation property is all in the city, but I believe that the city property, so Burton Weta is in the county, so I think it's roughly on the west end of their property. That is, that is all county for that road. And I think actually um you can correct me for one, I think that might actually belong to the railroad. I'm not sure.
Well, they have the right of way that's there. So um, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not I'm not certain, but the the railroad may actually own what is all of that. I believe we've got some sort of access or some sort of agreement with them to put the road there, but
Okay.
Um, I believe that eastern half, give or take, is in the county.
Okay.
Have I I took a couple of hot laps out there this afternoon, and that road was particularly bad today if you happened to drive it. Um, but I'm curious what um I I've seen some of the um drawings here for the proposed building. I'm curious what effect it would have if that was closed.
If what was closed?
If that road was just closed.
Um.
It looked like most of your access was coming from the west.
So, right. Uh, so we plan on um incorporating some sort of a bus drop off there on the west end. Um, and so we potentially wouldn't have to use that road. Um, I think the big issue is all of the dust and, you know, we're planning a whole STEM outdoor courtyard that we're going to have students out there. And I mean, I work down there every day and um just the sheer amount of when the when the mill is actually producing and then on top of the dust, um especially even closer to that area, I think just trying to keep that um pollution down, if you will. I mean air air pollution.
Yeah, I guess from my perspective, I'd be happy if we could assist in in uh locating grants that are applicable and and helping to procure those. I think I'll so I mean, some of them will just flow through. If we if we were able to find that one that fit, it could flow through our budget, obviously, as a grant as grant dollars and then
Wonderful.
funnel through. Um, do you have any interim city manager Quin Day? Do you have any first thoughts?
If the grants we're looking for to construct the street, generally they have to flow through the city and follow the city's purchasing policy and and bidding policy. So find a grant for a nonprofit uh to build a road. I'm not aware of any, but for the city to find a grant to build a road, there's a potential. Or as an alternative, the fundraising that uh the foundation is trying to do, if they pay for the road, there's more access to finding grants to help with the construction, either the horizontal or vertical uh part of the campus that you're trying to build. But what I'm saying is that uh find a grant for a road, it'd have to be a city grant, city maintained road, and there'd be a cost share with it. It would be easier, but for a foundation to find grants uh or do fundraising, whatever funds are raised are pretty you can do with what you need or the branches.
Right.
So if the the road is six hundred thousand dollars, if you use that the city to build the road, then you can work with the foundation to find six hundred thousand. And other in the uh the project. Plus, uh finding roads, grants for cities that you have to go through the process. Yeah, all start of any type of construction even for it would be a year. I'd be happy to meet with you and talk about different alternatives, but yeah.
That would be wonderful. And I think uh our idea was to not pave it until after the building was built, just to um we we're going to be be kicking up construction dust and stuff anyways, so.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next item, two B, is wastewater treatment plant water line replacement bids. Public Works Director Anderson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Brad Anderson, Public Works Director. This is a um discussion that we uh basically need to um replace some internal lines within the wastewater treatment plant facility. Uh, as an F O Y I, for clarification, this, these are not lines within the building. They are the supply lines on the grounds themselves. So I wanted to be clear about that in case you were asking about um anything inside the building itself. So we're here. Um, basically, we brought this uh project up because of several water line breaks that we've had um within the last year, even since I've been there. Uh, I think we've dispatched crews out there six different times. Um, so this is once again within all the facility grounds, and I feel it's important to replace all internal lines. We did a sealed bid opening um for the treatment plant. Uh, it took place at ten A M. on Wednesday, July second. We sent out um a notice. It was made public. Um, we contacted several different vendors. Um, I believe at at least double digits in all. Um, we re- we only received back three. And uh, as you can see in your packet, we had a a couple of very competitive bids, and then we had a little bit of um Denny's Plumbing um right here in Abilene for the amount of thirty seven thousand four fifty two um twenty three. Um, we'd like to uh award that to them at possible, and we'll bring this back up as a business item in a couple of weeks. We do have a funding source for that um out of our water distribution services, which basically is anything that carries water to for a supply purpose um and using it within our grounds is is what we'd like to do. So do you have any questions about the project?
How does this um relate to the settling, the building settling issue?
Um, no issues at all there. Not not uh the the items do not seem to be um related in any way at all. Um, basically what we're dealing with, um this obviously happened way before my time, but in speculation is, um it was um everything out there right now is PVC pipe, um by the way, and that um um for whatever reason, the pipe that is currently in the ground is very brittle. Um, whether it was older pipe um when it was placed in the ground at the time. I don't know all the details, but it sure I don't know all the details, but it sure shows signs definitely having problems. And now that some years of service have taken place on it. We've got one specific section out there that we've got several bands on and connecting repair bands. And just to eliminate those and wait for the next section to break, this is at the point we're at now. So, but your original question, I do not determine this to be anything with the settling situation that's going on with the building. So.
Are you, are you sure that is PVC that's out there?
Yes. Well, okay. Majority of it is PVC. We do have some poly sections that have been placed in, in some short repair sections and just an FYI, we're trying to get everything back to one sustaining system. But most of our problems are with the PV sections of it, definitely.
Remind me, when was that all constructed?
Catching me off guard here, I believe that plant is about 20 years old.
Okay, that's consistent with what I'm thinking, like 2004, give or take.
2008.
Okay, there you go.
Right there in that.
Do you know if that is, was constructed to spec? I know we have some other concerns with some of the other things being constructed per the construction documents. I'm curious if that was actually spec'd as PVC at that time.
I can't answer that, but what I, from what I understand from the project that city staff did a lot of the placement of the lines from the meter across the yard until it got into the facility. So everything in the facility, once again, I don't believe to be, we're not having any issues there. So. That's the history I was, I've been told on it.
Do you have, if you wouldn't mind, if you would just kind of give us a diagram of what we're looking at before the next meeting?
Sure.
Or even prior.
Yeah, I think we do have a diagram kind of laid out for how it was going to run across the grounds and the facility. I know we're going to have to bore in two different places. One underneath the, would be the west driveway and then we're going to have to bore the supply area up the steep embankment to the, into the building area or to the building area.
And I'm looking at the bids here and it's not clear. What are they replacing that with?
It's a poly. We're replacing everything with poly.
Is that like the black pipe?
Well.
Like HDP or?
Depending on what you're gonna use with it. So it's not all necessarily black, but yeah. The new style pipe, we're getting away from the PVC.
Okay.
Yes, I can get a map. We did have a detailed drawing. I apologize for not including this in this, but it's within the grounds and where the, where the plan is for everybody, everything to be replaced and where it's going to be placed.
Is that something you can just send out email out to all of us?
Yep.
Okay. Any further questions for Public Works Director Anderson? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item is 2C 14th Street Drainage Detention Discussion, Jared Loomis with Olson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, Jared Loomis with Olson. Yeah, coming with another update on the Northeast 15th Street Drainage Study in our project. So we provided some background maps just to, I guess, provide some more context. So originally we were asked to look at the overall drainage basin, and that's in that first exhibit one that we provided, which shows the drainage area map. After completion of the study, we were directed to look at a, so the original study outlined a detention basin, what, what we're calling the West Detention Basin. From there, we were directed to look further at a secondary detention basin to the east. And so we've proceeded with that. We obtained a topographic survey and have done preliminary design. So the preliminary design came from using design dollars efficiently, just to get it to a level to look at the necessary property acquisition that would be required for that east pond. So then that's the last exhibit that we provided. And so we stated that we'd come, provide another update, I guess, look for direction to move both ponds to full, you know, 100% design construction documents or one or the other. Or also just answer any questions about the necessary property for the east pond. I think the west pond, we kind of know the property that we're going to have to tame that hole currently vacant parcel and then get some storm easements through there. But I think the east was where there was a little more ambiguity on exactly how much property we're going to need. So then that is provided in that last exhibit. So stand for any questions or comments.
Just your, your rough interpretation of there on that east one with it looks like three different property owners and that two of those are related to the permanent, then all three are related to construction easement? Am I reading that right?
Correct. Yep. So there's an existing 10 foot utility easement that kind of outlines a lot of those parcels. So you can see the shaded area would just represent new easement that would need to be obtained. And yeah, the darker blue would be permanent drainage easement. So that would be, yeah, for well, construction of the pond, so grading, kind of carving out a basin and then putting in the storm pipe to get to the, to the north to where it would outlet to the street. And then the, yeah, I could have used not two shades of blue, that would have been easier, but the aqua shade of blue would be temporary easement just for construction of that pond and storm sewer is the idea. That usual, the construction easement or temporary easement would go away after a period of time. But the, the permanent would, would be a forever thing that the city would, would have.
Roughly, for what that's going to accomplish and helping to alleviate the stormwater problems, does that, I guess that that's the value question for, for us to make is does that acquisition cost match the relief it's going to provide?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a great question. I think, so this east basin came as a result of, I think, kind of looking at open spots to do other things. I don't know if there was a necessary, very direct flooding problem that this was going to solve. I think there was maybe discussion on properties or streets flooding further north. But as far as, you know, the defined problem it's solving, I don't know if there is one. I, it will reduce flows, so which therefore will, you know, offload storm water that, that does sit in the street. So, you know, it's a little, I would say it's hard to define very clearly that comparison to the cost.
A question that, I don't know, maybe, maybe you should also look to interim city manager Quin Day. Maybe that could be something where the city could reach out to those property owners, because it seems like just in the past with this issue that since I've been on the city commission, we've had multiple different people in this neighborhood come here and tell us. And they're all very well aware of their, the, the problems they have with the flooding in the area. So maybe that could be just a quick conversation with any of the property owners there. Before I give an answer, that's what I would like to know from their direct experience.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's totally fair. That's.
Yeah. And like you said, there's not immediate flooding issues right in that area, but further down there are. And it would provide a, I guess, a slowdown, if you will, of that stormwater drainage.
I believe in your, the previous time you were here, you kind of had a a 10 year, 50 year kind of scenarios. Where do, where do each of those, I guess, fall as far as addressing that type of rainfall?
So yeah, the, the west basin, just yeah, for background, the west basin could reduce the, the storm to what would have been a hypothetical 100 year from existing conditions. The east that does not meet the 100 year, but it's between the 50 and the 100. So that kind of gives scale. It, it's not defined with exactly within, but between those two levels.
And then that's an either or scenario that you've proposed there.
For the two basins?
Yeah.
No, it, so we, we're, yeah, we can do either or. We don't have to do both. So they kind of, they're in their own separate drainage basins. So you'd have one effect or two effects, depending on which basin you use.
So just so I'm clear, you said the west basin would reduce a 100 year flood. So if there was a 100 year flood event, it would mitigate that to maybe a 50 year.
Yeah. And it's, so really the, the basis of the analysis was to look at, so prior to anything being developed in that drainage basin, what was the 100 year flow? So now what, what would be coming out of that proposed basin would be, would equate to that existing 100 year flow. That was the comparison. Since we're kind of doing detention after, because you know, in a typical development, you'd have existing flows, you're going to pave more surface, then you need to put in detention to offset those flows to match existing rates. We looked at doing that after the fact and seeing if we could get a 100 year basin, and we can on the west. On the east, we could do a 50 year, but not quite the 100 year. So yes, in, in the current storm of every storm, the two, 10, 25, 100, all of them would be reduced some from how it sits today. So there would be benefit provided, but that was just the basis that we used from pre-development conditions.
And I have disclosed this before, I think, to Mr. Martin and city manager one day, and I believe the rest of the commission. But I, my, an entity that I own is the owner of the proposed west basin property, just for full disclosure.
So I understand correctly that the west basin will handle drainage from one area.
Correct.
The east basin addresses drainage from another area.
Yep, correct. So in the very first exhibit one, yeah, so exhibit one kind of outlines the, the A1 drainage area, that is what would flow into the first detention basin. So approximately 1.61 acres. And then that would be held back and released downstream to North Wildcat Street with underground pipe. And then the east detention basin would capture runoff from D5 and, and a portion of D3, because that's where the basin would be. But yeah, two separate drainage basins and yeah, two separate drainage areas.
And you said that the detention pond on the west side would handle a 100 year flood. So if we got how many inches of rain an hour is that going to handle before it's?
Ooh, I, I have a table. I don't have those all memorized, but I could provide that of, of what, what you'd be looking at, even over a, you know, a 30 minute period. You know what that equates to? I can, I can pull that information.
I think that's, will help when you talk with the people in the area that they can relate. If you're getting three inches an hour for this period of time as opposed to what a 100 year flood is. I know that's what engineers work with and, and designing, and the same thing with the, the east.
Yeah.
What kind of rain events is that going to cover?
Yep. And that is, I'm glad you brought that up because I think, well, in, in the current environment, there's a lot of discussion about flood events and what a 100 year flood represents. That, the correct way to think about it is it's actually a 1% chance that at any spot a flood can occur of that level. So with over, I think there's 19,000 drainage basins in the United States. There's, there's a very good chance that multiple 100 year storms will occur based on the probabilities, 1% chance happening.
Just one more question, the, the east basin, do you have a map that overlays the parcels or is that what that is and?
Yes, so that property acquisition is that, you can kind of see it, it's a radial lot lines going through there. But those, yeah, we did get the boundary information for that, just to, to try to see exactly what, so yeah, there's an existing 10 foot utility easement and then new easement would be acquired outside of that.
So that's with the property lines, your two backyards will be affected.
Yeah, primarily two, and then one, the furthest north one, I think we can do just a temporary, just, we can, we can get the pipe all the way over there to the existing easement, and we would just need a temporary for construction on that, furthest north property.
So it was my understanding when we talked about this earlier, there was a possible option of trying to remove taking property. I see that these options, correct me if I'm wrong, all require taking individuals.
They do, yeah, yes, they would require obtaining easements. So they would, the, the property owner would still own it. The city would just have the right to come in and maintain, replace the storm sewer pipe within that easement. That type of thing. So.
Is there any option, you know, a different option without, is it possible to try to take care of what we need to without taking land from property owners?
So not, I, I don't think to, to put a detention basin anywhere, no, just because the amount of space that you need to do that within city right of way, of course, those are taken up by streets, sidewalks. So in these drainage basins, no, it would, it would be obtaining easement from private property to, to solve the, or put in a detention.
I do want to clarify too, we wouldn't actually be taking the property. We would be obtaining an easement and we would be paying them fair market value for that.
Correct.
Thank you.
I don't want to go down the eminent domain route. I don't even want that mentioned.
Yes, it would be obtained through negotiations between the city and property owner. Correct.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I just didn't want to scare anybody.
No, no, that, I, that's where my mind was going. So thank you for the clarification.
So it sounds like, yeah, have, have staff have conversations with property owners and then.
And I could provide some of that information on the, you know, how, how deep or how much.
Plain language is.
In 30 minutes type of data. Yeah. And I can, I can provide that. So I think then from there, we'll maybe wait for those conversations to happen before moving the design forward that.
Yeah, I would.
The direction.
I would prefer that. Yep.
For the, sorry, not used to it, from the flow of the water for the east one, is there the possibility of stormwater inlets? And then underground piping, so you would not have to remove access to their backyards. I mean, it would be significantly higher now. The way the water flows, is there a way to put an inlet in to capture what we need to?
Yeah, we could. And you're saying do that instead of a detention basin?
On the.
On the east side?
Yes, just as an option.
Yeah, we could look at that. Yeah, we could, we could look at potentially just putting in, yeah, inlets and then still piping it to the same location. Yeah.
Yeah, that can be a part of the conversation with property owners is how much, how much they use that backyard space or what? Yeah, get a, get a feel from the.
Well, then I think also the, the conversations you have on, you know, if those properties and then even, you know, a couple immediately north aren't having problems, the, because the detention basin, really what it does is offset flows further downstream. Though even if they're not experiencing the issue, if there's, you know, four houses downstream that says, yeah, this street's always flooded, my driveway is always full of water. You know, that would be the person that may see the benefit of a pond in that east basin, heritage inlets. So I think conversations make, like with the property owner, whoever you talk with, that could determine the path forward as well.
Yeah, I think, Evan, that will help.
Yep. Thank you.
And our next item is 2D Sea Clip Engineering Services, Southwest 6 to City Limits, Mark Bashamp with Olson. Public Works Director Anderson first.
Good afternoon, once again, Commissioners, this will probably be a, a team effort here, but I was just going to introduce this. Per the master agreement, this is for services or for Olson's on the south end of the sea clip, which would be from the south city limits to Southwest 6, just for clarification. I think one important thing to clarify on this is that KDOT has issued this project and the south and the north project from the UP railroad tracks to North Fifth under one project number. So just for there's clarity there. The north sea clip project agreement was already approved. Olson has been working on that. So this is, this would be a continuation to now actually start design and everything on the south end. These projects are scheduled to take place next year during the summer months. So just for clarification, when this all took place, I was contacted by KDOT District Engineer and I kind of understand it from that world it came from, but just to let you know, there are some expected savings by combining the two projects together. And that's the first thing he kind of mentioned to me. So I don't know what those savings are. Um, so I don't know what those savings are, but I, I think that can be relevantly true from my history of what I know in the past. Um, the next thing is, if you were, do remember the sea clip that we finished up a year ago, those were actually a combination of two projects together, so this, this would be um, in coordination of similar to what we've done before in the past, so, um, uh, when it comes to the agreement itself, um, I guess, I think you guys have seen the packet, but if you have any more in-depth um, details, I'll bring Mark up and let him visit about them.
Okay, thank you. Mark Bashamp with Olson.
Good evening. I just wondering if you had any questions, uh, what you have in front of you is phase one hundred to four hundred in the agreement, which is the design of the south portion of the project, and then phase five hundred. Since the, the projects were combined, it also includes the inspection services or the north portion, so it includes the south and the north together for phase five hundred. So that way, that's all uh, completed and, and ready to go. Just to answer the question regarding schedule, it is scheduled for a February of twenty-six uh, bid letting by KDOT in the KDOT schedule of the combined schedule. The packet, uh, what you had in your packet was the south portion only, not the updated schedule from KDOT.
I don't, don't have any questions for Mark, just questioned in general for staff, because it is, it is confusing in my head of we, we've had some combinations and some moving around, so having enlisted the, um, what, from what street to what street of Buckeye, and when, um, the construction schedule, I guess, is for, for these, the south and the north portions, just.
The south end would be from right away, or excuse me, from right away.
City Limits to.
What I'm saying, city limits to Southwest Sixth Street.
Right.
Where the project ended the first, the first, the year or two ago. Yeah, and the next project is from the UP railroad north that includes Fifth Street.
Okay.
The downtown portion that, that we talked about with sidewalks, and, and by the way, that project's been reduced in size by eliminating a lot of the entrances, run, some of the work on some of that, and also eliminating some of those sidewalks, uh, as per discussions we had with city commission in the past.
Um, and then the, the KDOT grant portion is that from.
Four hundred apiece would be a.
Four hundred apiece.
So it's eight hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars.
Great.
Yep, Frank, and then your share is just shy of six hundred.
Right.
It'd be your share.
Yeah, that, that helps clarify it right now.
Yeah, sorry, should have brought that up.
The uh, engineering agreement that the uh, commission approved previously, uh, does that not include the uh, con- construction administration?
It does not. It just only included design. In the past, uh, in the past, we've always uh, uh, included just design, and then once we get done with design, once we have a contract, then we entered into a, a CA services contract. Uh, but in this agreement, it was decided to bring it all, all together. I, I will tell you that the, the, the engineering uh, uh, has already been started for the north end. Uh, we have told staff that we want a meeting with staff here just to go over again, cause it's been a while, go over again, because we kind of delayed it. Set it aside because of the new schedule, and then now we'll bring them all together. Here is one set of plans.
Anybody further questions for Mark on this item?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I would consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded, do we have any commission discussion? Seeing then, I'm gonna roll call vote, Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
I.
Myself, yes, motion carries, we are adjourned.